Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday Night Business Meeting for January the 11th, 2021. The Board has just convened in closed session. We are now back in open session. And before we adopt the agenda, I would just like to ask that the Board consider amending the agenda tonight to add a couple of items. I would like to add 8.03. This is going to be Board Member Committee Reports. I would like to ask that we move adjournment item number 11 and make it number 12, making number 11 Discussion Items. 11.01 will be a discussion for Board of Education meetings to meet virtually versus in person, and making 11.02 a discussion item on student plan status. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, then we will move down to items number 5.01. This is the approval of the January 11th, 2021 Personnel Recommendations. May I have a motion that the January 11th, 2021 Personnel Recommendations be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We will move to 5.02. I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes as presented and to keep them confidential.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will move to number six, which starts our recognitions for the evening. And first, we will have 6.01. This will be the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we will ask Ms. Glenda Jones to join us.
I think it may be Ms. Boone who's doing all these.
Okay. We'll take just a minute to see whether it's going to be Ms. Jones that will join us, or Ms. Boone who will actually be doing the next set of recognitions for the Impact Through Education Awards. It is Ms. Boone. Welcome. We will start with the Hill to Shore Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and our viewing public. It is my pleasure to announce the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We are thankful to Mr. Tim Vaughn and to Hillbush Ford for their continued sponsorship of this teacher recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for January is Sally Brown. Mrs. Brown is a third grade teacher at Bethel Elementary School, and she was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "This is our first year at Bethel, and we have been blown away by Mrs. Brown. She is kind, compassionate, and goes above and beyond for her students. She not only strives to make sure her class is learning, but she also strives to make sure they know they are loved. Despite the unusual year we are having, she has built a classroom community of respect and kindness. She works hard to make sure every child's needs are met and that every child has the tools he or she needs to learn and do their best work. I have the unusual perspective of being a mom of twins in her class. My twins learn at different paces and in very different ways. She recognizes each child in her class as an individual, works with them where they are, and applies the teaching strategies that work best for that child. She encourages the kids to work hard and do their best work." Going into this year with virtual learning, I questioned how much my kids would learn, but because of Mrs. Brown's dedication to her class, both of my children are excelling in ways I never imagined. Mrs. Brown goes above and beyond for each and every student and deserves a special recognition as Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Mrs. Brown, we thank you for your care and compassion that you bring to your classroom and for recognizing your students' individual learning styles and helping them succeed. Congratulations on your selection as the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for January.
Okay, and we will keep you for 6.02 for the Impact Through Education Awards.
Yes, ma'am. The Impact Through Education Awards are sponsored by Equitable, formerly AXA Advisors. We also want to say thank you to Concord Trophy for printing the award plaques each month. I will continue to work with each school's principal to ensure that their honorees receive their plaques since we are now in the virtual meeting status and not having guests here. Tonight, we will recognize Impact Through Education honorees at Mount Pleasant Elementary School and CC Griffin Middle School. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary is Kylie Boger. Kylie is a wonderful fourth grade student at Mount Pleasant Elementary. She works hard to make sure others feel included. She's kind and respectful to adults and peers. Kylie helps new students and is very conscientious about how others feel. She is confident in herself and always tries her very best. She completes her work and asks to redo any assignments she feels were not completed to the best of her ability. Kylie is wise beyond her years. She is a pleasure to have in class and to know, and is very deserving of this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations Our next student honoree from Mount Pleasant Elementary School is Sophie Trask. Sophie is an extremely well-rounded fifth grader at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. She excels academically and is also athletic and artistic. Her infectious personality and desire to learn make every group meeting special. Sophie gives total effort to every task and presents an outstanding work ethic in all situations. Her kindness, compassion, and fun sense of humor show that she has a heart for people. Her maturity and humility make her a true superstar. Mount Pleasant Elementary administrators and staff are grateful for the positive impact Sophie has made on the school. Congratulations, Sophie. Our next Mount Pleasant Elementary honoree is Kristen Harwood. Mrs. Harwood serves as the Impact Classroom Teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. She builds strong connections with her students and their families and has made the Impact Program a success at Mount Pleasant. She loves learning and teaching and is one of those rare people who works very hard while keeping a smile on her face. When she is teaching, she beams when she knows that she is reaching a student. Teaching comes naturally to Mrs. Harwood, and she constantly strives for excellence from herself and her students. She is a valuable teacher leader at Mount Pleasant Elementary, delegating with authority and competence. Mrs. Harwood has demonstrated great sensitivity to organizational needs as well as creativity in solving problems. She is perceptive, emphatic, and committed to every task she takes on. Mrs. Harwood interacts well with her colleagues and is an articulate, polite, informed, and motivated educator. Congratulations, Mrs. Harwood, on your Impact Through Education Award. Our final Mount Pleasant Elementary School honoree this evening is Terri Farrington. Terri Farrington has served as Mount Pleasant Elementary's Office Receptionist for the past 16 years. As the face of Mount Pleasant Elementary, Mrs. Farrington greets families and staff members each day with a smile and makes sure that everyone feels welcome. Within the school, Mrs. Farrington is a go-to person for a variety of projects and tasks, and she's always looking for ways to help others. Mrs. Farrington is a true asset to Mount Pleasant Elementary, and the school community feels fortunate to have her there. Congratulations, Mrs. Farrington. Now we'll move on to our honorees from CC Griffin Middle School. Our first honoree from CC Griffin is Christopher Portillo Tellis. Christopher is an eighth grade student at CC Griffin Middle School. Despite the challenges of COVID-19 and living in an area with limited internet connectivity, Christopher has pushed through academically and only delivers his very best for his teachers. Christopher maintains his grades, participates in class discussions both face-to-face and virtual, and excels in all of his assignments. He is the definition of determination and remains focused and dedicated as he navigates his final year of middle school. Christopher is an example for many to follow and is an Impact Through Education honoree for his willingness and dedication to be successful. Thank you, Christopher, for making CC Griffin a great place to learn. Your CC Griffin family is very proud of you. Our next honoree from CC Griffin Middle School is Sabrina Wallace. Sabrina also is an eighth grade student at CC Griffin Middle School. Her ability to light up the halls with her smile, laughter, and kind words are refreshing for any student or staff member. Sabrina has embraced the many challenges and changes in education due to COVID-19 and has adapted well to both face-to-face and virtual learning. Currently, Sabrina has As in all of her classes. She dives right into learning and isn't afraid to ask clarifying questions to expand her knowledge. Sabrina is always willing to help her peers. She is an Impact Through Education Award winner for her tenacity in education and her willingness to not let anything hold her back, not even a pandemic. Thank you, Sabrina, for your positive impact as a student at CC Griffin Middle School. Everyone at CC Griffin Middle is very proud of you. Congratulations. Our next Impact Through Education honoree from CC Griffin Middle School is Jessica Perez. Mrs. Perez teaches sixth grade science at CC Griffin Middle. The first thing you notice when you meet Mrs. Perez is her big smile. She is a relationships and students-first kind of teacher. Mrs. Perez spreads her infectious enthusiasm to all those around her. When we are in-person learning, Mrs. Perez can be found clapping and singing in the halls as students arrive. All of her lessons start with inquiring about how students are doing and giving students a chance to lead in her class. She has high expectations for her students, and they meet those expectations while enjoying and being fully engaged in what they are learning because they are clearly having so much fun in Mrs. Perez's class. She serves on various committees and is even presenting several PD sessions on creating equity in the classroom. One of her colleagues said, "I admire Jessica for her outstanding qualities as an educator and as a leader in her profession, but I mostly admire her because she is an all-around wonderful person." Mrs. Perez is truly dedicated to the students and the staff she works with, and she is a great asset to CC Griffin Middle School, and the school feels fortunate to have her a part of its school family. Thank you, Mrs. Perez, for the impact you make in the lives of everyone at CC Griffin Middle School. Congratulations. And our final honoree this evening is Jennifer Lefler. Mrs. Lefler is the Responsibility Room Coordinator at CC Griffin Middle School. Since COVID-19 began in last March, Mrs. Lefler's role has changed significantly, and she has risen to this ever-changing role, bringing a nice calming effect to everyone she works with. When online learning first began, she was so patient and kind to CC Griffin families, assisting parents on the phone, often saying, "I know, my children have the same issues. I'm going to stay on here and help you. It will be okay." Mrs. Lefler has assisted with covering classes, working with students, answering phones, running the front office, calling parents, and going wherever she is needed at the drop of a hat, all with a big smile on her face. She truly demonstrates the definition of teamwork and is a Jill of all trades at CC Griffin Middle School. Mrs. Lefler has been an essential part of the school's daily success, which is why she was selected to receive this Impact Through Education Award. Her grateful school community says, "Thank you, Mrs. Lefler, for all of your teamwork and support. We couldn't do it without you." Congratulations to Mrs. Lefler and to all of our Impact Through Education honorees this month.
We will keep you for 6.03, the Holiday E-Card Contest Winners.
Yes, ma'am. In 2011, the Communications Department developed an idea for a holiday card design contest for students that would be fun and engaging, selecting a winner from each school level. Upon approval, we developed guidelines in an entry form and announced our first Holiday E-Card Contest in November of 2011. Over the years, the number of entries grew, some years larger than others. As digital design capabilities began to be more widely used, our team added a digital design category to the contest. In 2020, to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the contest, our team asked students to focus their designs based on the theme "Home for the Holidays." Students responded to the call for entries to the 2020 Holiday E-Card Contest with nearly 100 entries submitted to help us celebrate our 10th anniversary. As we are each year, our team was blown away by the artistic talents of our students. Thank you to all the students who entered designs in the traditional and digital design categories. The winning designs were used in our official district holiday communications last month, and I just wanted to share with you the artwork that was selected. In the traditional design category, our elementary winner was Hensika Balanariyan from Cox Mill Elementary. Our middle school winner was Aubrey Jones from J.N. Freeze Middle School. And our high school winner was Sophia Muller from West Cabarrus High School. In the digital design category, the elementary winner was Addison Campbell from Pitt School Road Elementary. The middle school winner was Lilia Davis from Harris Road Middle, and the high school winner was Harrison Bargat from J.M. Robinson High School. So congratulations to all of them, and thank you for entering the contest this year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boone, and we truly do have some outstanding, talented both students, staff, and we also appreciate all of our sponsors, Mr. Vaughn out at Hillbush Ford and then with AXA. We appreciate what they do for us to make these programs happen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board Members, next we will move to 6.04, and we will ask Mr. Bill Loughlin, Vice President of Mosley Architects, Mr. Tim Louder, and Mr. Brian Cohn, and they will address the USGBC of the Carolina's Green Gala People's Choice Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Board Members, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce tonight Mr. Bill Loughlin. Bill is the Chief Operating Officer and K-12 Lead Designer for Mosley Architects. We have had the privilege at this school system to work with Bill on two occasions at our most recent elementary schools, as Odell Elementary School and Royal Oaks School of the Arts. Bill brings over three decades of education -- excuse me -- education design experience to the projects, and this was never more evident than at Odell and Royal Oaks. He is joining us tonight, highlighting an achievement received by Royal Oaks last year. So with that, I'd like to hand over to Bill the recognition and presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Well done. Good evening, School Board Members, Madam Chairperson. Bill Loughlin, I'm just very glad to be here with you tonight. I'm going to try to talk. If my mask fogs up on me, it's going to get really awkward here, but I've got some remarks I'm going to read to you here. So the United States Green Building Council is responsible for creating and administering what's called the LEED Rating System, L-E-E-D. It stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. As we embarked on the Royal Oaks project with you guys, you all challenged us to achieve a LEED Silver rating on this project. In the end, when we were done, we actually were able to squeak out a few more points, and we achieved a LEED Gold rating, and you guys already know that. But I do, among other things, I just want to commend the Cabarrus County School Board for having the foresight and the leadership to champion the sustainable vision and goals for this project. As a result, you are saving lots of water and lots of energy every year for the life of the building. And what that translates to is you're saving a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money. The school uses about 50% less energy than a typical school, so half what a typical elementary school would use. We are expecting you're going to save $36,000 every year just in energy. We expect you to save 225,000 gallons of water every year. But one of the most important features is the rooftop photovoltaic solar array. It is a 223 kilowatt array. It's up on a couple of the different roof areas. It is expected to generate more than 60% of the building's annual energy every year of its energy usage. We are data-hungry, kind of number-crunching people, and we also like to follow up to see how we're performing. So we've been following your project like we do others, and so far, just the solar array by itself has saved $47,000 of energy in its relatively short lifetime to date. Together with the other energy efficiency elements, the project has saved almost twice that amount, so almost $100,000 so far. And you're just going to keep saving it from year after year. You also tasked us with using the school as a teaching tool. So along with your super-smart teachers and school staff, we developed a green building curriculum which students for years to come will enjoy, helping to create the next generation of environmental stewards in our children and your students. So each year, getting around to the good news here, each year, the Carolina's U.S. Green Building Council hosts an awards program and a gala and a competition that identifies and celebrates innovative, sustainable building projects across North and South Carolina. So we're talking about both states. This year, there were 20 other projects in the running for these awards, one of which was our very own office. We moved to a new office and did a green office, and so we were competing against ourselves, sort of. So it was interesting. So Royal Oaks beat out all of those other projects and was awarded the People's Choice Award. So I'm here to present that to you tonight. I won't walk up there and hand it to you, but I will leave it with you, the display, wherever you see fit. I do want to give a special shout-out to Tim Louder and Brian Cohn. To thank them for helping us, they really helped shepherd the project through this process. It is a process. It takes extra effort. It takes extra care. You have to want to do this, and they provided an abundance of both of those qualities. So thank you, guys. So congratulations, and thank you again for being champions of environmentally responsible design and construction. So thank you very much.
Mr. Loughlin, we appreciate you being here tonight. Yes, absolutely. That award makes us all feel really, really good. And Board Members, I just want to make sure, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Cohn or Mr. Loughlin?
I just want to say that, you know, I've gone to Royal Oaks a couple of times, and it's incredible what has been done there. So thank you, guys, very much for the fortitude that you had to make that happen. It's really incredible what they've done, so.
Good design. The kids love it. That's the most important thing to me. Thank you.
Ms. Sandage, anything? Ms. Adcock?
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Fur and Ms. Carpenter, I will recognize you. Ms. Carpenter, I'll let you go first.
Well, Bill, you know, I love when you can say, "Save money," and when you tell me I can save money, I really like that. And then the school is really beautiful. The design of it, I just love, but the money part, I really love, and thank you so much. You did an outstanding job.
Thank you, Mr. Fur.
It's always good to hear the positive things that the school system are doing.
Absolutely, and to get an award that we can recognize. So thank you, guys, for being here tonight.
Mr. Grimsley, can I just say one thing? First of all, we do want to say, Bill and Brian Cohn and Tim Louder appreciate all the work that you did on that. And as they said, the Board really was kind of out front on using some energy stuff. And also, our county commissioners made sure that they funded that and wanted to be a part of that. So it really is a community plus that ultimately is going to be a plus for the school. Ms. Marsh at the school, as you said, beautiful school, but they've kind of embraced that technology. So we appreciate everybody, everything they worked on that and our county supporting that because it really has been a win for everybody. So thank you very much.
Excellent points. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, at this point in time, I do want to absolutely recognize that Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Fur both are with us here virtually. And just so that you understand that I'll be stopping at some point in time to recognize them, even though they're not in the room, I want to recognize Mr. Burgess, our SRO here tonight from Hickory Roads Middle School. Thank you for being with us. We also want to let the viewing audience know, and for those who cannot see, that all the Board Members are here. We are masked. We are completely socially distanced, and then plus some, but we are definitely adhering to the rules that we are supposed to abide by. And with that, we will move on to item number seven, which is the approval of the minutes for December 7th, 2020 work session, December 9th, 2020 call meeting, the December 14th, 2020 business meeting. Are there any corrections or noted comments at this point in time? And I will allow each one of you to take a minute. Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Ms. Sandage?
Yes.
Ms. Adcock?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter? We may have lost her. Mr. Fur?
No, I'm still here.
Okay.
They're fine.
Everybody's good? Okay, great. And with that, I would ask for a motion that the amendments, and I will state them one more time, December 7th, 2020 work session, the December 9th, 2020 call meeting, and the December 14th, 2020 business meeting be approved as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion for Ms. Blackwell. May I have a second?
Second.
And I say--
Second.
Okay. You want to let Mr. Fur have that one? Okay. Mr. Fur will be the second.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay.
Transportation charge.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so next we will move to item number eight under our agenda, which includes, it begins with the Board Chair comments and the Superintendent comments, and we've added an amendment there to add 8.03, which will be the Board Member Committee Reports. At this point in time, I would like to cover several different items. I had the privilege to be a part of the COVID Task Force meeting on Friday and the subgroups, and we're going to have a short little presentation here just in a little bit. But the one thing that I heard as I was going in and out of those subgroups, the most important piece of that that came out with some of the dialogue and the discussion, is that communication is a priority. And as much as we all know that, at some point in time, we think we're putting out all kinds of information. We think we're, you know, and most of the time we are inundating the general public with a lot of information, but maybe not exactly what they need or in the format that they need. So with that being said, I'm going to clarify just a couple of different areas. And I see you have on the screen the task force. Is that where we're going to start? Okay, that's fine. All right. So I know there's been a lot of interest in what that task force looks like, the committee members that serve on it. I want to say we have some really great people serving on this task force. This has turned out to be something extremely beneficial. We will move forward. It's still kind of in their skeleton areas, if you will, for looking at due diligence and requesting information and, you know, how the school system works and how we address different pieces and parts like transportation, school nutrition, rules and regulations when we're hiring, you know, just various different areas, which it's very difficult to put a lot of people in the room that may or may not be familiar with those, and especially community people that definitely do not. So there has been a lot of work behind the scenes. Most of those have met two times, some now three. They're still in that due diligence phase, but at first, I just want to actually present. So your first slide is going to be the action teams. So there are approximately 34 to 36 individuals that sit on this team or this task force, and they are divided into four different action teams. So the first one being the decision-making metrics, and I'm just going to read this straight so that people get a really good definition of what their charge is. This action team has been charged with creating the metrics that the superintendent and the Board of Education will utilize when making recommendations and decisions regarding the plan status of the district, be it Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C. So that is action team number one, Decision-Making Metrics. Action team number two-- Action team number two is titled student groupings. This action team has been charged with determining the recommendations for the superintendent and the Board of Education for the students who have the option to attend face to face in relation to the plan status of the district. That is action team number two, student groupings. Action team number three is internal supervision and coverage. This action team has been charged with recommending to the superintendent and the Board of Education the best practices and/or strategies for school leaders to utilize in times of high absent rate among staff. Some strategies will be level specific while others will be all levels. And again, that's action team number three, internal supervision and coverage. Action team number four is transition considerations. This action team has been charged with making recommendations for the superintendent and the Board of Education to consider when transitioning from one plan status to another. Again, that is action team number four, transition considerations. If you'll move to the next slide. So these individuals, and I know people were very curious, I think you'll find that we have a great coverage from across our district of administration, staff, teachers, parents, community representatives, just a really great group of people that cover a lot of the different areas that we need to look at when making decisions. So in our first decision making metrics, we have Jessica Castredale. She is a community member and works with Atrium Health. Logan Barrier, who is the Dean of Students with Mount Pleasant Middle School. John Basalise, he represents Student Services. Sue Burns, Administrative Services. Chuck Taylor, the Director of Facilities and Maintenance for Cabarrus County Schools. Crystal Swayze, she is a parent and a local business owner. Tammy Alexander, she is with the Cabarrus Health Alliance. In student groupings, we have Sharon James, who is a parent, teacher assistant with the WR Odell Primary School. Kara King, she is a community member and works with the Academic Learning Center. Sandy Ward, she is a principal with WR, WR Odell Elementary School. Erin Plummer, who is an elementary teacher with Harrisburg Elementary School. Paula Yost, she is a community member and she's also with the Child Protection and Futility Team. Beth Downs, retired EC teacher. Keisha Sandage, she is our Board of Education member and liaison to this group. Jessica Henley Perez, she is a middle school teacher with CC Griffin Middle School. Jennifer Barnett, parent representative. Moving to transition considerations, action team will be Jennifer Parsley. She is a parent and she's also on the City of Concord Council. Amy Louder, she represents student safety and well-being. Barbara Shepherd, she works with the Cabarrus Health Alliance. Kelly Morton is the middle school PE and athletic director for Hickory Ridge Middle School. Ronnie Boone, Communications. Liz Snyder, she is the principal for Concord Middle School. Timothy Vaughn, who is a community business, excuse me, community member and business leader. Melissa Burgess, an elementary teacher with WR Odell Primary School. Ruth Brooks, who is a community member. And then moving to the fourth group, internal supervision and coverage, we have Catherine Bonds-Moore, who is a retired teacher and counselor. Cynthia Howe represents our Human Resources Department. Dustin Shue, who is the principal for Central Cabarrus High School. Noah Driver, high school teacher with Concord High School. Art Whitaker, who is our Director of Transportation. Denise Adcock, who is our Board of Education member and liaison. And then Danine White, who is a parent representative. So I think everyone will agree, we have just about every area we could possibly think of and have the right people at the table having these discussions. They are still in their due diligence phase. There's going to be lots of recommendations that will come out that will involve metrics, looking at substitute shortage, bus driver shortage, things that we can do at the state level, our local level, what we have control over, and can work with our own individual policies. And then we will have another, they are still in about their third meeting, probably towards the end of January, and we'll receive a report from them at our work session in February. So with that, do any board members have any questions or comments? I will open it up, and actually I will start with Ms. Carpenter, if you'd like to start or if you have anything at all.
The only question I had, and this comes from emails that I received, had some parents say, did you appoint all those? Or because they said, how, you know, if I put an application in, how did, who appointed them? Did you appoint all of them? Or how were they appointed?
Well, you know, the board of, the board collectively gave me the authority to work with the administration and the staff, and it was me, it was Dr. Louder, it was Brian Schultz. So there were several of us that actually pulled together because, you know, they, they are actually the experts who knows who needs to be best seated at the table for administration. So it was a combined joint effort for sure.
Oh, okay. That question was asked, who actually appointed them?
And I heard-
I thought there was individuals-
Right. So I saw a couple of those emails, and I answered them, and I told them, had we had to go through an application project, process, and I think we all talked about this, that would have been very convoluted. It would have taken a lot of time. You know, this is something that we really needed to go ahead and get started, and we felt like we had the best people at the table to make those kind of decisions. And as these groups move through and move forward, they've actually collected a different, you know, different information. They've asked for input from adding parents, adding other people that they felt like might not be at the table at that point in time. So they've had, working with, with Brian Schultz, our facilitator, have had the ability to, if they felt like they needed to add, you know, additional information, get information, add additional people, they were able to do that and still are. But I feel like this is an absolutely phenomenal group of people. I was in several of those subgroups meetings on Friday, and it, they, they just have really done a really good job. So I think you'll see that when the report comes out. And at that point in time, board members will be allowed to, you know, ask questions, ask for additional information, give them a different charge, take the recommendations, tweak the recommendations. So even though this group is moving us forward to an emergency plan, and that's what we need, you know, the Board of Education still makes the final decision. Does that answer your question, Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, that, that was, that was my question.
Great. Mr. Fur, anything?
No questions, just outstanding group you assembled.
Perfect. Ms. Blackwell?
Yeah, I just, I want to say that there are some really, I mean, this group is amazing when you look at just how diverse they are and just the level of expertise that, that these folks have. I'm just really grateful that they have volunteered their time to help this community and, and figure out what we need to do to get these kids back in school. So thank you all that have volunteered to be on this task force.
Mr. Walter?
So they're going to give us a recommendation, all four groups will have a recommendation? But the next one or the-
So their work next will be for the four of those, they each have a facilitator, you know, they, they have their groups, each have a facilitator and what's called a note taker. So at the next meeting that they'll have, those four facilitators, they were all able to go in and out of each, and I'll let Ms. Sandage and Ms. Adcock take some time here too, because they've actually been a part of this. I was just kind of going in and out. But they each have a facilitator, so they've went in and out and visited each one of their other subgroups and was able to get some feedback from what they were putting forth and then what they were hearing from some of their others. So it was real interesting to get some feedback from, you know, the different groups. But with that, I'll let Ms. Sandage, I know she's anxious to make a few comments about that herself.
I'm just looking forward to getting the report and the information on what their recommendation is on moving between the different plans.
So I truly appreciate everybody who has taken the time to be a part of this task force, and it's really a breath of fresh air when you can get together that many people, even from different walks of life, and be able to get some things accomplished. I was really surprised by the red, the round robin that we had last week and being able to see what the different groups were discussing and knowing that work is actually happening and things are, are being done to help us see a different picture. The ability for people to take the ideas of another person, even though they may not agree with them, and still be open to listening to where they are coming from and being able to put things on paper so that we can make a sound decision, is just really, I just really appreciate it. I've, I'm in student groupings, and every single person in there is diligent about helping us to get to the, the end of the road, so to speak, and help us get our kids back in school safely. So again, I just appreciate being a part of that group, and I am excited to see the finale.
Very good. Ms. Adcock?
Yes, I also say that this group is really exciting, and I am on the internal supervision and coverage. And what's really been great about our group is we have so many different perspectives, and we've been able to look at challenges differently, and we've had feedback about some of our policies and procedures for things that we have done normally that opened up conversations for us to maybe make changes so that things are not a lot of red tape and things are more streamlined. So I think that there's going to be some great things that are going to come out of this.
So Dr. Louder, I would like to give you and Brian Schultz an opportunity to speak as well.
Yeah, I have not been very involved. Mr. Schultz has been the facilitator. He's done a great job with that, pulling everybody together. I, like Ms. Grimsley, kind of popped in some groups a couple of times to make sure that they were aware, but really Mr. Schultz has been the, the person that's pulled a really large group together to try to make sure that everybody was empowered and be able to have input on that. So kind of like Ms. Sandage said, to get that many people together, organize them, and just have them be able to kind of work and facilitate is really Mr. Schultz's, he gets all the credit for that. So I have done almost nothing with that except be there. Obviously, we've worked on some advice and to be able to pull some things together on how to get there, but he really has done the work for that and certainly deserves the credit for it.
And I absolutely would like to have a comment from Mr. Schultz because he has absolutely, it has amazed me how we have put so much information out there, and he has been able to go through those charts and decipher that information and to break it down and get it back out to us. And it, I know there's been just an endless amount of time put in that, especially when we've thrown you curves and said, we like this information, we think it needs to be done differently here, and you've just taken it and ran with it.
Sure, thanks. I won't say too much, just other than I'm just appreciative of everybody's time. I mean, I told them the, at the beginning, I mean, donating your time is the biggest service act that you can, that you can give to the school district, and it has taken a lot of time, not only the meetings that we participated in, but then outside, they've had the sub task force meetings. And guess what? Not everybody agrees on what to do. And they have acted civilly, and they've had good dynamic discussions, and they've learned from each other, and they will come forth with some recommendations, be vetted through a leadership team here in the district, and then it will be presented to the Board of Education. And, and then they still have the hard task of deciding, you know, what to do. And, and I just don't envy anybody right now, any, any school district or board across the, the nation that has to go through this, because it's just a, it's a scenario where we all have to come together and decide on some compromises and some agreements when we don't necessarily aren't 100% in with a compromise, but you get to a place where we can at least have a consensus. So that's the beauty of what I've seen in it. And I got, I'll just have to brag, I'm going to brag on myself if I can. I got a compliment. I did a virtual gallery walk on Microsoft Teams, and I actually asked for some critical feedback from a teacher at Harrisburg Elementary, and she said I did a great job. So I was pretty excited about that. So, but thanks for the opportunity to lead it. It's been a lot of work, but it's also been a lot of fun too, so thank you.
We appreciate everything that you have done and all your endless hours, and we look forward to the final recommendations. And once again, I want to reiterate, and that was a great segue, you know, there is a lot of people that have a lot of different hour, our opinions on how we get back to getting kids in school. And we get those emails on an endless basis, you know, what, there are so many different, and, and everybody has a valid reason for what they state, you know, no matter which side of this that you sit on, everyone has a very valid reason. But the goal at the end of the day, as we stated on Friday, is to get these kids back in school at some point in time. We may not agree on that date or what that looks like or how to get there, but of course, that is our ultimate goal. We have been in C, we have been in B, we have worked with those, but we have not gotten a real good plan to get back to A, and that's what the charge of overall is for this task force. Ms. Sandage, did you have something else?
Yeah, I was just going to say, just looking at the folks that are up there on that list and the comma behind their name explaining who they are, that doesn't do justice to what these people bring to the table. I've already gotten, you know, you only got one EC person on there and they're retired. These folks have a wealth of information, and it's not in this narrative here. And I just want to make sure the public is aware of that.
Those are great points, because you're right, that's, that's their title, but they bring a wealth of information in other areas. Most, the parent representatives, some of those have EC children, you know, there's just, and most of those, you know, we had a little bit of feedback that it didn't appear that, you know, that there were enough parents, but most of those up there are parents, you know, no matter what role they take on or how they serve our system, they're still parents. So we just, once again, appreciate all that you've done, and we're looking forward to the recommendations that'll come forth. So the other piece, and this came out of the transition group, which I felt like was really important, and we're going to start with a slide that's going to be brought up about the website for the Board of Education. So there was some confusion on how the Board of Education actually operates and functions. And it was very, it was enlightening for me to hear that most people are thinking that we're having all these special call meetings or emergency meetings, but they don't realize that we are actually in regular session meetings. So he's going to bring up our actual website. So for the general public, if you're looking at this, this is the way that you can actually be prepared for the meetings that take place. Then they, they are on there, there's a calendar, if you can find that, for the Board of Education meetings. The whole year is there, and he's going to bring it up. There we go. So the Board of Education typically starts their monthly meetings on the first Monday, which is considered the work session. This is the meeting where we are gathering data, we're getting information, the staff is informing us of decisions that need to be made, or different times of the year is that we need to approve certain items, policies, processes. But that night is kind, is what's considered our work session. We're asking questions, we're asking for additional information. So that would be the first Monday of each month. The second Monday is our, actually what we call our action meeting. We're taking, you know, we're taking action. We're voting, we're making decisions on the information that we received at the work session at the prior Monday. So that's the first Monday work session, the second Monday is a business meeting, and that pretty much takes place unless it's around a holiday, and you'll see sometimes that date varies. There are the occasion that we do have to have special call meetings that will address particular items of discussion, and there is an occasional, as everyone knows, an occasional emergency meeting. But other than those, we have that board meeting, the calendar dates stated on the website at all times. There is a link on the front so that you can always join the meeting, just like most of you are doing tonight, but that you'll always know ahead of time. So it's not, there's no surprises unless something has to be moved, like we said about a holiday, or, you know, if there's a weather, an inclement weather issue. Other than that, go to the website, click on the Board of Education, you get your drop down box, you get to choose the calendar dates, and it gives you all your information. So I think that's very clear unless any of the board members have something additional to add to that. Okay? So the other item that came out Friday is just where we are. Most, most people understand, and on the website, once again, if we could pull up the slide, there's a lot of information on there, and I know it's a lot, but most people, I think, are really looking for a definitive date, you know, something that they can just glance at it, and they kind of get an idea of a snapshot of where we are at that time. But the, where we are at this time is where are we with these plans? So the majority of people know, in the general public right now, we are in Plan C. And that means until January the 19th, all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school are in remote learning, five days a week at home doing virtual learning. January the 19th, if this board does not take any additional action tonight or make any changes, January the 19th, we will move into Plan B, which means there will be two days in person and three days remote learning. Okay? The only thing that we can do for middle school and high school at this time, per the governor and the state regulations, is for middle school and high school, is Plan B. The only option that we have to move, and per the governor we can, is to move K5 into Plan A, and that may be a further discussion later on tonight. But at this point in time, we are in Plan C. Everybody is in remote learning until January the 19th. If the board did not take any other action at this time, we would move into Plan B for all levels of education. So I'm hoping that that makes that very clear. You know, I just want to say that the situation with the state and the county is always being monitored. Dr. Louder and myself are on a call every Monday morning for the Cabarrus leaders with the health- the Health Alliance. We receive all the updated information of what's going on in the community and that's take, that's actually sent out to the board members. You know, we do not have crystal balls. It is really hard, you know, to decipher all this information. We're getting a lot of reports from a lot of different entities statewide, locally. So it's a lot of information that the board has to look at, you know, when we're looking at these decisions. But we do know that we have to have a progression plan and to transition between these plans and to get these kids back in school. So at that point in time, that's what we're hoping our COVID Task Force will help us with. Board members, any comments on that? Is there anything additional you would like to add? Is that good? Is that clarified, Dr. Lauter? Do you feel like we've done a good job with that?
Yes, ma'am. We just want to thank Ms. Boone and her team, too. We just plan on having on the right-hand side up there on the homepage, which says Plan C and the dates to just kind of keep that there permanently, say, here's what we're currently in and here's when the dates change depending on when the board makes that decision. So we'll just keep that there as long as we're in these sessions to always do. So I know that was some feedback that we got and Ms. Boone and the communications team jumped on that, so hopefully that'll help some with communication.
And that actually looks really good. That's, that's different from when they saw on Friday, so I think that's, that gives you just a real good snapshot of where we're at and what those dates really are so they don't have to look hard for it. Anybody else, any other comments, comments, questions? Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Fur? Yes, ma'am?
Yep. When are we going to get the update from this week for COVID and everything?
So that came to you a little bit later today. The slides were shared with you, but we'll have a little bit of discussion with that when we, with the items that we amended the agenda for just a little bit later.
Okay. So Dr. Lauter's not going to give that because at that time, is he going to give his recommendation before, when we get that?
We will let Dr. Lauter make his comments at that point in time. If, I was assuming that that discussion would date place with what we've added to the agenda with the 11.02, if you're okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Mr. Fur?
I've got nothing.
Okay, great. So the other, just the other couple of comments. Ms. Sandy, did you have something?
I was just going to make a comment about communication and I think, you know, there's this expectation that when we receive an email as a board, that we're all going to respond. And I, I think that maybe there needs to be some clarity around that because the way I see it, if there's an email that's sent to the entire board, I think that should be up to the chair and the vice chair to speak for the board, but if there's something that maybe comes to me individually, that may be a different discussion.
Absolutely, and I think I answered you just like that today. I've been trying to send out on behalf of the board, if it comes to all the board members, I do try to answer. But if you do get individual ones, of course, you know, it's your privilege to answer, you know, of your own accord. And I think that's just the understood, if you're good with that. So the next item I'd like to just make a statement on, there was a couple of other little things that came out Friday, is the parent survey that went out. So the reason that that went out to K-5 or to elementary parents is because, number one, right now, as we just stated, we cannot do anything with middle school and high school parent, or children right now. They are not allowed to return in anything until the governor deems different other than Plan B. The only, only children that we can remove or send to a different plan at this point in time, and he has, he has stated that, that we can open it up, K-5 can be returned to Plan A. That's the only thing that we can do as this board. And that's the discussion, of course, that was on the table last week. So therefore, you know, we felt it was important to send that out to the parents to figure out, you know, just where you are right now. There's a lot of stuff going on in the community. It looks a little different than it did two weeks or two months ago, so we felt like that was important. But they were the only parents right now that we felt it was important to survey and not only to figure out where they are with A, B or C, but also to figure out if they needed and required transportation. So we'll go over some of those numbers a little bit later with those agenda items that we added as well. But just for clarification, it's not that everybody's opinion is not important, but it was just important right now because they are the only group of children that we are allowed to do anything different with than returning all to Plan B like we'll be doing on January the 19th. Then also, the certified teacher survey. I think that got a lot of attention and, you know, I've said to many and sent out some emails that the, it's not that we do not value all of our support staff, teachers' assistants, custodians, the support staff in all the offices. Everyone is important. We do get it that it takes everybody to make this all work. But right now, with all that's going on, we are mandated by law to make sure that certified teachers are in these classrooms. So it is extremely important that we see what that picture looks like. You know, as we said, there's a lot of changes right now. There's a lot of people that feel differently about, you know, entering classrooms and doing what, what we need to have done to get, to get these teach, these students covered for, with a certified teacher. And also how that affects or impacts our substitute pool, which we know we're already having issues with. So at this point in time, it's not that we won't need to survey others at a later date possibly, but it was just extremely important to figure out what that looked like right now with our certified teachers' coverage. And I hope that makes that statement a little bit more clear than some I think got it initially. Do any of you board members have anything you'd like to add for that? Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Fur, anything at all?
No.
Okay, great. All right, at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Lauter for his superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by wishing everyone a happy new year. I hope everyone had a safe, relaxing and enjoyable winter break. Students at our traditional high schools are completing final exams this week. As a reminder to parents, students are required to take these exams in person per mandates from the state. I think there have been some, has been some confusion about that. I know it's a very confusing time, but right now, the law says and the State Board of Education says that students are required to take their state tests in person. There are some things where there are some delays. You actually could take it later on for makeup before the summer and be able to handle that through some appeals for that. So if parents are uncomfortable with that, it's something they can contact their principal if, the principal of their school to decide about testing. But I would say that right now, we are certainly encourage everybody to come in and take that test in person because it's a state requirement until the state changes that. I also want to remind parents about the new attendance guidelines that take effect on January 19th with the start of the second semester. You can find the new guidelines in the new and noteworthy section on our district website. January is School Board Appreciation Month. Cabarrus County Schools is grateful to our board members for their service to students, staff and the school system. They're active, involve citizens who give their personal time to support the district students and staff. We appreciate their commitment and thank them for their dedication and service. Certainly in this crazy time to want to be a part of and serve the school system is something that we very much appreciate and know that you're taking on probably alienating half of the population by just deciding on the issue. So thank you for your service. January also is mental health, mental wellness month and our student services and student safety and well-being departments will host a virtual provider fair for families on Thursday, January 14th. That'll be from six o'clock to seven o'clock. Families are invited to attend the fair to connect with a variety of local mental health and resource providers. More information, including a list of participating providers, is available on our district website. Again, a virtual provider fair on Thursday, January 14th from six to seven. The Logistics Career and Technical Education Program at West Cabarrus High School recently was featured in MHI Solutions and Industry Trade Publication. CTE Director Rusty Parker, along with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Crystal Hill, and I were all quoted in the article. MHI is the nation's largest material handling, logistics and supply chain association delivering the latest knowledge, strongest connections, industry leadership and market access for manufacturing and supply chain professionals. You can find a link to that article in the headline section of our district. That's one, it is our newest CTE program. And Mr. Parker and Dr. Hill have certainly led us towards trying to get out in front of new industries and industries that'll help our students get jobs. Two Cabarrus County High School students were recently recognized by the United States Congress with a congressional award. Congratulations to Kayla Anderson from the Cabarrus-Kinapolis Early College High School and Charlie Reagan Brown from Hickory Ridge High School. These students are only two of 59 students recognized in the state of North Carolina for their initiative, achievement and commitment to service. The congressional award is Congress's only charity and the highest honor bestowed upon a youth civilian through the U.S. Senate and House of Representatives. Lastly, I have a few reminders. Again, we went over the plan that we're in and the board is going to discuss and possibly vote tonight to make sure that you're aware of whether we're in Plan A, B or C depending on what the board decides tonight. You can look for that in the upper right-hand column of our website. The school nutrition department continues to provide free meals to children in our community ages zero to 18, so all students zero to 18, even if they're not enrolled in Cabarrus County Schools, like we said, example, a four-year-old. You can find a list of meal sites and mobile meal routes by selecting locations for school meals icon on our district website. Friday, January 15th is a planning and staff development day as that's the end of the first semester. Monday, January 18th is the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And then we'll begin the new semester on January 19th. And on Wednesday, January 27th, all report cards will be available. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. And next we will move to the newly added 8.03, which is Board Member Committee Reports. This is going to be an area of placeholder, if you will, on each of the business meetings where we all sit on a lot of committees and represent as liaisons. And it's really important, if you have something that you feel like out of these committees that we get updates or information that we're not able to sit on each and every one of them, that it gives you an opportunity in that time to bring us back something that you think is important for us to hear. And I think Ms. Blackwell has something for us tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So this year, I have actually been tasked with sitting on the School Health Advisory Committee with Rob, who has been on there for several years. And we actually had a meeting last week. John Basileis is the one who heads this committee and he did a phenomenal job. We don't meet every single month, we meet every other month, so it was about an hour and a half long meeting. We have a lot of people out in the community that are on this advisory committee that have been on there for several years, including a parent representative as well. So those who want to know if, if we have a broad spectrum of people that are being represented on these committees, this is another one. And I believe this is a state mandated or state required committee that we have to have. So we are having broad representation out in the committee on this as well, but the things that they focus on, on the School Health Advisory Committee are the mental health piece of it, which for me, I've been very concerned about, especially given these, these crazy times that we're in with COVID and how these children are able to adapt. Substance abuse is another one of their focuses and then also obesity. And I think we've all been concerned about all of those things as well. Things have kind of changed and shifted and they're not able to, unfortunately, be able to see these students and really get a grasp of them when they could see them in person. So a lot of this is virtual, but it's incredible, some of the work that they've been able to do. Dr. Lauter, you mentioned that they have a virtual provider fair on the 14th and that is something that they've been working very hard for. And I would encourage parents to please log on to that if they can. I also wanted to make sure that parents understand because I, like a lot of parents, are having my own issues with my kids being at home and, and trying to work through these, these, the school and all of that. So, so please make sure that if you are having issues with your children, if there's questions that you have, our staff is there to be able to help. We have a lot of resources. I asked a lot of questions about, I wanted some metrics, I wanted some numbers. Unfortunately, a lot of that is anecdotal information right now and they can't really give out some, some information just because it would undermine some of the strategies that they have as far as being able to help and connect with these students. But I just wanted to encourage or let the public know that even though we are not in school, all of those things are still being looked at to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our children that are, that are having any of, any issues, that may be having issues with this, so.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Ms. Blackwell? Any comments? Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Fur?
No.
No, we're good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your update. Okay, so next on our agenda will be items number nine, which is the guest speakers. And I'm just going to read straight from this so that people understand, this is done a little differently since we are in a different setting right now with the numbers of people you can have in the room and the guidelines that come down from the state. But guest speakers, this is in accordance with Board Policy 2310. A part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Speakers must sign up with the board clerk via email at melinda dot abbott at cabarrus.k12.nc.us. You can also find that on our website. No later than 5:30 of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. Speakers must include their name, group name, if applicable, address and phone number and list the general education related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. Speakers will, will need to remain in their vehicles until the guest speaker section of the meeting begins. Speakers will be called into the building by an assigned number given to them after signing up. Speakers must wear a mask and will be temperature checked and screened before entering the building and will need to exit the building immediately following their comments. During the comment, public comment period, the board chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate portions of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information with a specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. If there is an unusually large number of people requesting to speak, a majority of the board may decide to reduce the time for each individual or to require the designation of a spokesperson for each group of persons supporting or opposing the same positions. At any time, the board may establish additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in an efficient and orderly manner. Generally, personnel, confidential and specific school level, school level matters will be handled in accordance with the board's grievance policy and/or appeal rights afforded under the North Carolina General Statutes and are not the proper, the proper subject of the public comment portion of the board meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of ports, of points made by the presenter. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vote of the board members present to take action or on a presentation considered to be of an unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented. So at that, with that, and I think that's a really good explanation, especially probably for new board members, I'm going to start with the list. First on the list, we have Catherine Parish. And Catherine Parish's subject is middle school realignment and she is actually speaking for a group, so she will have five minutes versus the standard three. And Ms. Parish, if you will, when you come to the table, just state your name and your address, please. Yes, please.
My name is Catherine Parish. I reside at 9639 Ashley.
Have you keyed up? Yes.
My name is Catherine Parish. I reside at 9639 Ashley Green Court in Concord, North Carolina.
You may start anytime.
Great, thank you. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Catherine Parish and myself and four other speakers tonight represent a group of 450 stakeholders in our community formed to discuss the middle school realignment plans. Many of us first became aware of these plans at the December 7th Board of Education meeting when all three options presented moved our students from their local Harris Road Middle School across the county to attend Harold Winkler Middle School. That move would involve a doubling, probably tripling of their commute across heavily trafficked Concord Mills Boulevard, across 85 into a new community. Surely, there has to be another option than to remove children from their neighborhood and establish feeder patterns, give them a 40-plus minute commute through highly trafficked and congested areas only to return them to their community, their local high school and previous classmates in three years. So I dug into the data. I looked at current enrollment, future development, school utilization and feeder patterns, distance and transportation requirements and the use of major roadways as natural boundaries, all established realignment criteria. And there may be, in fact, a better solution for many students, not just the ones in our community. Our plan details, as indicated on this map, briefly, I will indicate that to you, that we are asking for students living north of 73 to move from Harris Road Middle School to Northwest Cabarrus and for students living south of 85 attending Northwest Cabarrus to attend Harold Winkler, leaving our students in the southwest corner of the county to maintain their residency at Harris Road. This plan attempts to treat all students fairly. It spares any affected student from the magnitude of impact and change that the current plans are asking our students and families to endure. It's a balanced, long-term solution that we believe will eliminate the need for additional alignment plans moving forward. Our plan accounts for current utilization and future growth, reduces commute distance and eliminates the need to cross I-85 for two groups and better to cross I-85 for two groups, and better aligns all three students with established high school feeder patterns. Though my fellow group members tonight will be presenting some additional details about these points, this is all just a fraction of the research and supporting evidence that we have to show that this is a viable solution for everyone. And so we are requesting tonight your assistance in securing a discussion with this plan with the internal planning team. We've come to the board tonight with this request because there are no further information sessions or opportunities for live public comment remaining on the realignment calendar. We have sent feedback in via online forums. We've received no reply, no acknowledgement, or no indication that anyone is willing to speak with us about this plan or the facts behind it. So we are asking you tonight, as owners of this process, for your help in facilitating this meeting. In addition, at the last public information session, the public was asked for feedback on the available option plans. And yet, no sessions have been planned in the future to discuss those results with the public, to let us know if our feedback had any impact on the options that are available, or if any changes are going to be made to any one of those plans before being presented to you for final approval. So we are also asking for an additional public information session to be added to the calendar and an extension to the March reclamation deadline, if needed, in order to make that meeting happen. To accompany the additional transparency to review the data, we are also asking for a session to include live public comments. Feedback, so feedback can be heard and acknowledged, and questions can be asked and answered. Over one dozen members from our group alone have indicated that they would speak at such a meeting. A forum like that, that would allow us to show you that we have over 1,200 signatures on a change.org petition, showing the support from our entire community that they greatly dislike the options being presented and want us to have a chance to show our plan to the internal planning team. We would really like for you to see that petition, and we will have an invitation waiting in your mailboxes tomorrow morning. How are other schools navigating this process? Brunswick County is also going through a realignment with Crawford GIS. They have three public information sessions and two additional sessions attached to Board of Education meetings for extended public comment on their calendar. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Thank you. That sounds great. Next is Liz Altschuler. And of course, she'll be speaking on the middle school realignment as well. Welcome. If you'll just state your name and your address, please.
Absolutely. Elizabeth Altschuler, 1038 Andwin Falls Drive in Charlotte, North Carolina, but Cabarrus County resident. Thanks for having me. I wanted to take a minute, three minutes, actually, to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we're experiencing with the middle school realignment. We are working together as a community of folks from the Highland Creek, Kristenberry area, which is very close to our current middle school and our feeder school. The impact that the changes of the three proposals all have us moving and doubling the distance. The distance isn't that big of a deal. But for those of you that have ever been on Concord Mills Boulevard between 3:00 and 7:00 o'clock at night, November, December, even January, realize that eight miles or nine miles in our area is not equivalent to eight or nine miles when you're in the country. We have 73, which runs behind our neighborhood. You can literally go eight miles in eight minutes. If you go out the front of our neighborhood and head towards Winkler, where we're being rezoned to in the maps, that timeline actually doubles and triples the time just to get those eight miles that the kids will be on the bus. Some of the concerns that we have, road congestion, traffic lights, divergent diamonds. We have mall traffic. We have on and off ramps to the interstate that the buses are going to have to go through. They may potentially even have to go on 85. I have gone through and done daily pulls from the app, Waze, to pull the amount of time and the traffic routes that it takes you to get there. In the 10 days that I've done that, and mind you, this was during the holidays, so there wasn't a whole lot of work traffic, the route was different every single day because there wasn't a consistent way to get where we needed to get to Winkler in an easy path. I'm so fearful that we're going to be putting all of our kids on these buses, and they're going to be stuck in traffic. And I know you all have kids here, sitting in the room with me today. If you're on extended trips with your kids, and you've got two in the backseat, they start bickering, touching, bumping, whatever, when they get bored. I know that's going to happen on the bus. I have concerns about that. And I don't think it's fair to put our kids through that and put them through that traffic, especially when the criteria laid out, as you can see here, and the current plans go against almost every single one of the criteria that you're using. We're not asking for you to make changes. What we're asking is the opportunity to sit down and talk through in more detail the alternate proposal that we've come up with. We've run the numbers, we've pulled the data. We're just very fearful that a change is going to be made without us having the opportunity to sit down with you, with the committee, and talk through the alternate proposal. The main thing I want to point out is it doesn't just impact our kids in the Highland Creek and Kristenberry neighborhood. It impacts kids all throughout the county. I grew up in Miami, we moved multiple times, I changed schools. When we moved here to North Carolina before my son started kindergarten, I told my husband, "We are not moving" because I do not want to do to him what happened to me where I had to get plucked in different communities. If we take our kids out of Cox Mill, move them from Harris to Winkler, and then put them back, our kids are going to have to grow community, change community, and then get back in. So I'm just asking for more time and the opportunity to sit down with you all.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lindsey Riley. And her subject is impacts to parent involvement, children with special needs due to rezoning. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hello.
If you'll just make sure that the mic is keyed.
Hello.
And if you'll just state your name and your address.
It's Lindsey Riley. I live at 1145 Tyrannas A Court in Charlotte, 28269. Extremely nervous, but here we go. Basically, I'm here as a parent on behalf of our community to voice our concerns regarding the current realignment proposal and the negative impact that will have on the parent involvement aspect of it. I'm sure as parents and educators that you guys know how difficult it is to balance the work and family life. I currently have three kids. They attend all three schools' levels, elementary, middle, high, with Cabarrus County Schools, and I try to volunteer as much as possible. You know, whether it's snacks for the high school softball team, or volunteering for testing, or driving a big crock pot of soup for the PTO Super Bowl at Harris Road, I've done it all. And basically, after looking at all this, I realized that being close to all three of the schools has allowed me to participate in all these activities. So according to Purdue University, as many of you may know, parents were the leading influence on our children's development and school success. When parents are involved, students achieve higher grades, perform better on standardized tests, and have lower dropout rates. Children benefit regardless of ethnic or racial background, socioeconomic status, or parent education level. And it is a fact that parent involvement directly correlates with student achievement. Parent involvement drops significantly when moving from elementary to middle school. These families, including my own, have chosen to live near our community schools because we want to be involved. For example, at least nine members of the current Harris Road Middle School PTO Board actually live in Highland Creek, Kristenberry, and Allen Mills, which are the same neighborhoods that are being removed from all three proposals. So we have a lot of parents invested in the school. Parents are busy working and taking care of families, especially now. It's crazy. You know, we shouldn't have to devote any extra time solely to transportation just to get our kids, you know, to and from school. It may be impossible to get to that PTO fundraiser, 504, or IEP meeting after working all day and having to drive an additional 40 to 60 minutes. And just to think, something as simple as dropping off a forgotten lunch, you know, may not even be possible for some parents if the current proposal is passed. As a parent of a child with a 504 plan due to a life-threatening medical condition, the thought of getting the phone call that my child is having anaphylaxis at school and knowing it could take me no less than 30 minutes to get to the school is so concerning. The amazing nurse, actually Bridgette, from Harris Road Middle School has made that call to me before, a few years ago. And getting to my child in six minutes felt like an eternity. This would also be the case for any medical, you know, emergency or family emergency, which is something to consider. I believe the distance alone will make it much harder to participate in any after-school activities, especially student athletes. Traveling back from an away game, parents would have to follow the activity bus back to Winkler and then drive an additional 30 minutes plus back home. This takes away time for homework, a family meal, or just time to be a kid. I remember my seventh-grade ball player getting home after 10:00 p.m. on some away game nights and being up till 12:00 a.m. doing homework. In conclusion, we just implore you to consider the negative implications of the current realignment proposal.
Thank you for being with us. So next, we will have Samir Arora, and also on middle school realignment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you will, okay. That's fine. Uh-oh. Are you good? Okay. So if you'll just make sure the mic is keyed. Okay, great. And if you'll just state your name and your address, please.
Yeah. Good evening, board. My name is Samir Arora. I reside at 9624 Ashley Green Court, North West Concord, North West Concord, North Carolina. So I appreciate the time to speak in front of you on the middle school realignment topic. I understand and appreciate board's efforts to resolve the Harris Road Middle School overutilization. I think it's much needed. However, the current plans that are under consideration, they do seem to not be, they're far away from an ideal solution. They are violating the rezoning criteria that are laid down by the school board. They do address the overutilization of Harris Road Middle School. However, they very negatively impact the area that our group is representing here today, which is the Highland Creek and the Kristenberry subdivisions, along with some of the subdivisions. The students from this area, under this proposal, will have to travel eight miles. Their distance would be doubled, traveling over, through congested streets over I-85. And it's likely that they might spend about an hour, you know, during busy hours. So it appears that the current plans are really violating the, as I said, the rezoning criteria that has been laid down by the school board. On the contrary, the alternate plan that was shared by my fellow speaker, Catherine, it does achieve the same relief for Harris Road Middle School. In addition to that, it's also taken into account the future utilization of the North West Cabarrus Middle. That's going to come from all the development that's, the future development in that area. Now, it does involve, as Catherine talked about, moving students from, who reside north of 73 from Harris Road Middle to North West Cabarrus, and who reside south of 85 from North West Cabarrus to Winkler Middle. But in doing so, we are really maintaining the natural boundaries that are found, that are formed by I-85 and 73. We're keeping students within these boundaries in all the three areas. You know, they're going to be close proximity to their schools. They'll spend a lot less time in bus. They'll use all of that time towards their homework, towards after-school activity, and also with their families, I think, which is very important for their development. As well as, we know that most of the parent engagement comes from surrounding areas. And our alternate plan continues to offer that benefit to the schools in all the three areas to benefit from parent engagement. As well as the social connections that come from feeder pattern, our alternate plan enables the feeder patterns from, you know, elementary to middle to high in all these three areas. So we do believe strongly that our alternate plan is the most viable solution for this problem, and it's most beneficial for children and families from all the three areas. So we're here to ask for three things today. We would like to include an alternate proposal as an option for public feedback, because that hasn't happened yet. And we'd like a meeting with the internal planning team where we can present and discuss the alternate plan, as well as, finally, the extension of the March 21st deadline so we can give the alternate plan the due consideration. I thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you for being with us tonight. And the last speaker we have is Pam Escobar, also on middle school realignment. Good evening. If you will just state your name and your address, and then you can get started.
Do I have to hit the button?
It should be out.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Pamela Escobar. I live at 10407 Summer Crest Court, which is in Highland Creek in Cabarrus County. I'm a parent of two girls. I have a third grader and a seventh grader. And we moved to the area when our oldest daughter was starting kindergarten. We bought our Highland Creek home because of the schools from elementary, middle, and to high school. So I want to draw your attention to this chart, which I think somebody had mentioned earlier. If you look at the criteria that Cabarrus County Schools says they want for realignment, the current plans, the three current plans, don't address all that criteria. They just focus on utilization. So I feel like that there's a hyper-focus on utilization. So I want to talk to you about feeder patterns and that utilization. Right now, my girls go to Paxman Elementary, Harris Road Middle School, and then will go to Cox Mill High School. So our current feeder patterns are based on geography, where entire elementary schools feed into middle schools and then into high school. Currently, our students stay together when they go through those schools. Friendships are made, teams are formed for sports. So if you were to follow any of the three current proposals, you basically would pluck our kids out of that and then have to return them to that. And if they make new friends at the new school, which hopefully they would, how would they ever get to see them? No kid can do an eight-mile ride on a bike when you're in middle school. So the proposal our group came up with would maintain the current feeder patterns, not just for us, but also for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. So let's talk about utilization. All three options, in our opinion, are flawed because they're constructed with the primary mandate to get schools to be at 71% to 91% utilization. But our students aren't physical assets. They're kids. They're our kids. They have families and friends they want to see, appointments near home, and activities outside of school. So the first flaw with the study and the plan's methodology is utilization. The metric is overweight, and distance measurements are significantly undervalued in the study. The current blue plan for Harris Road Middle School would reduce utilization from 116% to 91%. But that's just a quick fix. Not looking at the long-term, growth and future utilization of our area are not being considered. Through our plan, it reduces our utilization to 97% in the short term. But again, we understand, in the long-term, both under our plan and the blue plan, Harris Road would be back at 115% utilization. So similarly, the blue plan doesn't address growth at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, which will be at 110% utilization with future development considered. Our plan addresses Northwest Cabarrus Middle School's future growth with maximum utilization at 104%. So the current proposed plans are only a Band-Aid. Why make our kids suffer and change feeder patterns when another plan will be needed in the future? Move everybody once and maintain feeder patterns. That's a lot of numbers, I get it. So we need time to delve into that and to discuss it some more. So that's why we, as a school district, to come up with the best plan for everyone, should be able to discuss it more. So that's what we're asking. We want a meeting with the planning team, and we need an extension on the current timeline because feedback is critical.
Okay, great, thank you. And are you going to be leaving the chart with us, or is that?
No, we'll take it. And then we're gonna email some follow-up information.
That sounds great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, Board members, we're going to move to items number ten, which is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion that the January fourth, twenty-twenty-one consent agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
So, a motion by Ms. Blackwell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take that from Mr. Walter. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we will move to the items on the agenda that we've kind of rearranged, and we will start with number eleven, which is now our discussion items. We will begin with eleven point zero one, and this is the discussion regarding the Board of Education meeting in person versus virtually. And since this was an item that Ms. Carpenter would like to have, uh, to be discussed, I'm gonna let her start first.
Okay, thank you. Is there any way, did y'all hear the? I'm getting feedback here. Can you turn it down some, so I don't get feedback? Is that better?
Is everyone's mics off? Mr. Fur, is your mic off?
Okay, that's better. Well, that's, that's a little bit better. Okay, uh, the reason I have brought this up is everyone knows how our numbers are right now. Uh, we are currently, right now, at eighteen point two percent. We've got roughly about a hundred and fourteen, uh, people in the hospital. We've had roughly in this county about a hundred and, uh, fifty deaths in the county. Uh, our children are currently in virtual. Uh, we have met before virtually. I have checked, uh, today, uh, right now, Can, uh, Kannapolis City is meeting virtually. Uh, and I checked, when I checked this, I checked with the clerks of all these individuals. Um, the city of Concord, um, their council is meeting virtually. Harrisburg City Council is meeting virtually. Mount Pleasant, um, their council is meeting virtually. Cabarrus County Commissioners are meeting virtually, right now. Where, all our people, our, our people are meeting virtually, like our, our, uh, you know, most of our boards are meeting virtually, besides us. Um, our cabinet's meeting virtually, our policy count, our policy committees meeting virtually, our safety committee is meeting virtually, uh, uh, you know, about all of the committees that I serve, our CI committee, it's virtually, uh, about, all of us are meeting virtually. I think we need to be setting an example for our community, uh, of meeting virtually. We have met virtually before, and we didn't have any problem. Uh, if any of our board members were having problems getting connected, a lot of times they would go there to, uh, actually to the building and go to one of the rooms there. I've not had any kind of problem at all connecting on my end, and, uh, I think that, uh, we need to be setting an example. Uh, like I, I said, the, the rates right now, at what they are, I think that we need to be doing that, and, uh, the public can see us and everything. And my problem is, I can't mute my phone, I can't raise my hand, uh, you know, it makes it very difficult for me, uh, doing that. I have to sit here and hold the phone the whole time, and I think that, uh, we need to be setting an example for that. We need the governor saying, "Stay home," uh, to, and, you know, you know, and I know that I've read numerous emails saying that people aren't wearing their masks correct, they're, they're falling down, or they don't have them on right, or, or things like that. And I think we need to be setting an example for our community.
Thank you. And I will just start with Board comments. And Ms. Adcock, I'm gonna start with you.
Uh, I'd like meeting in person. I think that we are beyond the recommendations by our government right now for meetings. We are more than six feet apart. I feel comfortable. I don't feel at all like my safety is being.
Okay, Ms. Sandage.
I'm gonna echo what Ms. Adcock just said. I'm okay with meeting in person, as long as we, uh, follow the mandates that are in place. Um, and if I think that there's some issue where I can't get here, then I know that there's that option to be virtual, so I'll take that if I need it.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Yeah, every board member has the option to, to join us remotely if they don't feel safe. I believe, at least me personally, if we're separated, we got our masks on, I think that's, uh, safe enough for me to attend in person. Um, and then the governor, governor allows that for school business, so we're not, we're still within the, uh, within the laws.
Ms. Blackwell.
Um, I, I agree with, uh, what's been said, um, with everyone else that is here tonight. I have never felt unsafe about meeting here. Um, I feel like, in, in a lot of cases, we are, um, more productive, um, at least being able to meet in this capacity. Um, I certainly respect others' opinions and views on being able to, um, meet virtually, and, and I have absolutely no problem with that whatsoever. So, um, but moving forward, I would still like to continue to meet in person and maintain these, um, protocols that the governor has recommended.
Mr. Fur.
No, I agree with the, the rest of the guys. Uh, no, I'm not there tonight, but it's by, by choice of, uh, of vertigo, but, uh, yeah, I think we should meeting, meet in person.
Okay, and I would like for the viewing audience to understand, I know we get a lot of questions regarding that, but right now, what's on the, um, table from the governor and the state recommendations is that, as long as it's not, um, greater than ten, that we adhere to the masking and the social distancing. And I think most people can see that, uh, when they are viewing our meetings, that we are more than in compliance. I myself think sometimes it's much easier for us to be in person. I can see all of you, I can see body language, I can see when you need to say something, how you're responding. It's easier to get feedback. Uh, it's kind of hard, you know, to, um, navigate through call-ins, virtuals, and having in-persons. I've had to tell someone I could kind of get an idea of what the teachers are going through when they're having to do Plan B. Uh, but with that being said, we do the best we can. Ms. Carpenter, I feel like we absolutely understand, uh, your reasoning for not wanting to be, uh, with us in person, and we, we truly are okay with that at this point in time. I think I'm hearing everyone else say that they would prefer, until we were told differently by the governor, and he were to make, and that could very well take place, make some changes for those recommendations, but this point in time, I'm thinking back in senses that we all agree that we want to meet in person right now. If that should change, we can have that discussion for our February meetings. He has not made his announcements here. He's carried that through for, I think he extended it for the three weeks, but that did not change meetings, so we are definitely still within compliance. So at this point in time, I think I'm hearing that we are just gonna continue as is until we're told differently, or the board feels like they need to do something different. Okay?
Well, the one, one thing that makes it difficult for me, though, because one thing, the viewing audience looks at it, and they can't tell who's, they, it looks like we're not there. And again, I can't raise my hand, or I can't, you know, can't be recognized, and that makes it very difficult, or to mute the phone, or things like that. That, that's, that's where I have a problem with that, with just doing it this way. And so it does make it very difficult.
I understand, and that's why I truly do try to recognize you and/or anyone else that has to call in for any other particular reason, to make sure that you're given that opportunity. We announced that, uh, the board members that are not here, and, and that they are with us virtually. I know people question me why I have my phones occasionally. I know that you text, the two of you have texted me, there's things coming into me to make sure that I'm making sure if there's anything else additional that needs to be said. When you're not here in person, I'm more than happy to do that. But I feel like we accommodate just as much as we can. But with that being said, I think we'll just move forward for, for right now, unless something needs to change, and we, we will take that to task if need so. We will remain in person until further notice. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So we will move on to eleven point zero two. This is the discussion for the status of, uh, plans for, uh, students. Right now, I'll just reiterate, uh, for the general public, so we can just kind of get the discussion on the table, that we are currently in Plan C. All students are remote, five days a week at home. Uh, virtual learning is in place, January the, through January the nineteenth. If the board did not take any other action, January the nineteenth, we would move into Plan B, which would be all levels of students, K-five, middle school, and high school, would move into Plan B, and that is two days in-person learning with three days remote, with the exception of, of course, and Dr. Lauter, you may have to help us with the programs that are attended four days a week. Uh, but with that being said, I'm just gonna start the discussion. I just think we need to, uh, get some comments, some recommendations, some thoughts on the floor, and, um, and actually, I'm gonna start with Ms. Adcock.
Um, I would like for us to stay, uh, going to Plan B, January the nineteenth, and I, I feel like that there are, if I'm not mistaken, Rowan County is continuing to be in Plan B, and there are some other school systems that are also in Plan B.
So do you have any thoughts or recommendations after Plan B, which will go through February the sixteenth?
I would like to recommend that if, um, our teachers have vaccinations, and that we check the numbers, that at February the sixteenth, that we would move into Plan A for K-through-five.
Okay, and I'll start with Ms. Sandage on my right.
So today, we received the, um, information from the parent surveys and the teacher survey. I don't know that we'll do anything else with that. That's a question that I have, um, 'cause we haven't necessarily had a discussion about that. Uh, the other thing that I have a question about is if we, um, were to do with what Ms. Adcock is suggesting, will, will we be able to safely social distance with that large group of students, the K-through-five? Um, I know we talked about K-through-three and thought, in talking with Dr. Lauter in last week's discussion, that we could safely social distance that group. So those are my, my thoughts.
And actually, I'm gonna let all of you just make your comments. We'll just start the discussion, and then I will give, um, the survey results that Dr. Lauter, um, shared with me earlier, and actually, all the board. You've been emailed those results, uh, earlier today. So, Mr. Walters?
Yeah, I've been advocating to get our students in school as soon as we can, but also to make it safe. I don't know, do we have any idea if we can get our teachers vaccinated by that date? Well, what did the health department tell you today? It's your call.
Well, I know they're, you know, they're still working with that first group. They've had a huge turnout, you know, for that first group, which is the seventy-five and older. They'll move into the fifty and older, but didn't have a real designated date for that yet, so that's.
So we still have no guarantee that our teachers will be vaccinated by that, by that date?
No guarantees. We hope to definitely move them towards that, but to completely be vaccinated, uh, you know, I'm not sure anybody can commit to that piece of it.
And then we have our task force subgroup that's coming up with metrics that the board should consider to between, moving between A, B, and C. I'd like to actually see that recommendation before we, as a board, decide where, where to go. I mean, obviously, I'd still like to see our kids in school sooner, sooner, so the nineteenth, back in Plan B, I'm still in favor of that.
Okay, Ms. Blackwell.
So I will echo what Rob just said, as far as making sure that, um, we are Plan B, uh, for January the nineteenth. As far as February the sixteenth, um, I, uh, have, have been in favor of getting these children in school as soon as possible, as safely as possible. Um, I will say, as far as the vaccinations are concerned, um, not all healthcare workers have yet to get all of the vaccinations either. Um, so this is going to be a long process for folks to be able to get these vaccinations. Um, and so, you know, I do definitely want to hear, um, you know, Dr. Lauter, if you want to talk about the survey, or Holly, if you want to talk about the survey, and kind of just, you know, state what, what the parents' consensus was, but, um, you know, at this point, I, I still have not changed my opinion, um, and my thoughts on, on getting kids back in school as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Fur.
Yes, I'm still, uh, with, with Laura and, uh, on that deal as far as, uh, staying in B till the nineteenth, and then, and then we're just gonna have to look at, at the data at that time. I would love to say, you know, February the, was it the sixteenth, that we, we go to A, but, uh, we don't know that. Uh, but, but one thing about it, we, we do, the encouraging thing is, I think we're gonna have a plan to do that. Doesn't mean we're gonna react to it, or we're gonna all of a sudden decide to do it, but I think we'll have, we'll have some plans in place if, if the numbers suggest at that time, we can make that happen.
Okay, and Ms. Carpenter, before I move to you, I will just state, um, the survey results that all of you, uh, were emailed. So starting with the parent survey, and of course, this is only K-five, because that's the only level, grade level that we're actually dealing with, or can do anything different with at this point in time. But as far as, uh, the results, it was a fifty point eight percent, uh, parents stated that they would like to be in Plan A, which would be students to return four days a week. Eighteen point seven stated they would, uh, be in favor of Plan B, uh, which is the two days in person and three days remote. And then thirty point five percent, uh, stated that they would be in favor of Plan, or remaining in Plan C, which will be complete remote learning. The teachers, Certified Teachers Survey, was sixty-three percent in Plan C to continue in remote, twenty-three percent Plan B, which is the two pers, two days in person and three days remote, and then, of course, fourteen, uh, percent for Plan A, which is the four days in person and one day remote. And with that, I will allow Ms. Carpenter to make her comments.
Uh, thank you. Well, first of all, uh, well, I, I would like to get Dr. Lauter's, what his suggestion would be. I think that really, you jumped the gun, because really, I think you should have asked what Dr. Lauter's suggestion would be, what he would recommend. Uh, uh, I would like to hear that. Two, I think you need to consider what our percentage is right now. We have said that all along, before we automatically jumped to, from C. Uh, you have to take into consideration, Kannapolis just voted to stay in C to February the fifteenth, and they had been in A, and they're not gonna do that. They're gonna stay in C. They are considering the safety of their students, of their staff. I think we need to be doing the same. I, I would like to hear what Dr. Lauter's recommendation is, what he would recommend, and I think we should be considering those type things. Dr. Lauter, what would you, what would your recommendation be for us to do?
Madam Chair, you want me to speak to that?
Absolutely.
Um, well, Ms. Carpenter and, and the board, I've been pretty clear from the beginning that I would follow the guidance of the Health Alliance, and so the chart that they came out with, been pretty clear that, um, we have, the amount of cases we had, I think yesterday was the highest number of cases that we've had in Cabarrus County since this began. I think it was over two-fifty. Um, and we're in the red zone from all of the ways that were done as far as cases. The hospitalizations are at the highest they've been since the pandemic, as stated today. And as you said, the, the positivity rate, you know, when we were, um, recommending at ten percent, I think the Health Alliance says ten percent, we're almost double that at over eighteen percent now. So, based on that same criteria, we've been going from the beginning. The community spread is certainly something that we're worried about, the way that affects our employees. I think we talked a lot about it at the emergency meeting. So, um, again, when the, when the Health Alliance guidance is to be on Plan C and be in remote learning, that's where I would be. Um, but having said that, we certainly understand it's a, um, board decision, and we will follow the direction of the board, or what they would like us to implement.
So before.
Well, I think, I think that we need to look at what the recommendation is of that. Just this past Sunday, they have, there was, on the back page of our paper, it says, "The peak of the local COVID cases may not be reached until March," which we originally thought would be the, uh, the, the, had originally thought would be the middle of, uh, uh, February. Uh, also, CDC says unknown mutation may be fueling our, our spikes we have seen in, uh, the COVID numbers. That is another consideration that we have to consider. Uh, that's another thing that we have to be considering, and I think when we're, we were worried when we were looking at single digits. We're looking at double digits now, and we're talking about going back to that, and that, it's double what we did when we went to C. And, and now we're saying, "Okay, it's all right, we just need to go ahead and go back to, to, to B." I don't think that's acceptable. We're, we're talking about people's lives here, talking about our bus drivers, talking about our staff, and I don't, don't think we can be there. We had said we originally would look at our numbers every, every two weeks or so, and we could still do that, but I think we would be, it, it's just irrational, and just, we're, we're being, it's just not the right thing to do. We need to take the recommendation of our, of the professionals. None of us are professionals, health professionals. We may think we are, but we're not. We need to take the, the, we are a red county, we are, we're having the highest numbers we have seen, and I think we're being irresponsible if we do anything other than that. we have seen and I think we're being irresponsible if we do anything other than that. Now, y'all may all disagree with me and you have the authority to do that or, and say that it's not, but I don't think, I think we're being unfair to our staff and unfair to the children if we do something different than that. I want to get our children back just as much as anybody else but I want to do it safely and we do it a step at a time. We just don't automatically jump and do it. And that's basically what you're trying to do is just automatically jump and do something. And I'm not willing to do that. There was an individual and I think they pretty much summed it up and it said furthermore, putting teachers and parents in this situation to decide today between putting themselves and/or the children in harm's way with the infection rate and the speed in which such infections are occurring or keeping them fully remade is totally irresponsible and uncalled for. You have mentioned at the beginning of this pandemic that you will meet and make decisions on a bi-weekly basis based on numbers and on the recommendation from the Cabarrus Health Alliance. That definitely is a more rational and logical approach than rushing procedures you are now resorting to. One thing we learned in the past 10 months and so is that we are in a pandemic and it's impossible to predict what the future holds and that we have to be vigilant and make smart choices and decide that we will not put thousands of people and the community at rest. And I will stop at that.
Ms. Sandage?
I'm really tired of the community blaming the school system for our COVID numbers. We have been out for almost a month and we have doubled in numbers. So, Ms. Carpenter, I hear you loud and clear but we, as a school system, should be asking our community to help us. Our community is the reason why our numbers are like this and not our schools and I need for us to stop blaming ourselves for that.
So, I actually will segue that into some statements that have been made. You know, we get a lot of emails and one email we're being asked to, and what I really want to say is, I think sometimes because we are, the discussion, when you listen to a discussion, you take away what you really need to hear and want to hear, not so much as what's being said. You know, we talk a lot about parents and kids and the situations that they've been put in for these past 10 months, you know, where the teachers are and their, you know, their fear of entering buildings or going back to work and being exposed. There's a lot of information that goes into it. We get a lot of information from different agencies. You know, it was stated that the North Carolina Department of Health also has statements on there about school buildings being low to medium risk and that three feet social distancing is sufficient in most cases. There's a lot of information out there that we have to actually look at when we make these decisions and it's really hard. You know, we know one thing tonight, there is not one decision we're going to leave this room with that's going to make everybody happy. You know, one group is going to be upset and another group is going to be okay and that may reverse before it's over. There's a couple of statements that was made to me that I just want to reiterate and it's not that it's everybody's opinion in here, so we get called out for a lot of things that we state, but we get a lot of phone calls and we get a lot of emails. But, you know, there was a statement made that, you know, it was being looked at that teachers weren't doing a good job with remote learning. And that really, it really has nothing to do with what kind of job these teachers are doing. They have done a phenomenal job. They've been asked to do something they've never been asked to do and that is to teach these children in both settings, remote learning and in person. And I can't imagine how that works every day. It's a challenge, I'm very sure. We have a hard time maintaining meetings that are small like this. But, it's really not about the job that the teacher is or not doing. That teacher can only be as effective as that environment is on the other side of that screen for that child or how conducive that is, that environment is to learning. They have no control over that like they do with kids being actually in the classroom. It's more structured, you know, it's truly an educational setting. Homes are really not, you know, parents have kind of converted places and spaces to try to accommodate that. We've asked them to help be educators for almost 10 months, but that has been a true hardship on a lot of parents. You know, we get a lot of phone calls, I've gotten several, that parents have said, you know, I'm at my max, you know, I am trying to work, we're doing different shifts, we're trying to educate children during the day and help navigate them. Middle schoolers and high schoolers are a different level of that accountability. They can do a lot of stuff themselves. K-5, not so much. You know, these little five, six, seven-year-olds, it is really hard for them to try to navigate Chromebooks and how they Dropbox and the things that they, they haven't been, you know, taught how to do. Some of them entering kindergarten for the first time, they have no knowledge of what that is. Parents have not been educated or taught or trained in how to do that is a true challenge. So, it's on both sides. You know, we hear it all, you know, we hear can you sleep at night if something bad happens to our staff? Can you sleep at night if we lose our jobs and we lose our houses because we're trying to play educators and have family lives and make a living? You know, there's a lot of stuff that goes in this. There is not one board member in here that is doing this on a personal reason. We want to do what is best for our community, what is best for our kids, what is best for our teachers, and sometimes that message does not get out there in the way that it should. But, it is really difficult to ask parents for this length of time to continue to be educators and that's really what we're trying to do. And I hear you, Ms. Carpenter, we know that it's a discussion that needs to take place. We've got to make some decisions as a board. You know, as Ms. Sandage says, we have been out of school for a month and these numbers have went all over the place and our schools have been closed. We, I hear you, I received an email today that said we are one of the largest employers in the county and, you know, that carries a huge connotation to that of bringing those people back into the buildings. But, if masking and social distancing and the deep cleaning and doing everything that we are absolutely doing to keep our people safe and what really should be working out in the community, if that's the true answer to keep exposure from happening, we're doing it and we're doing it well and the Health Alliance has said that we are doing it well. I think our thought, main thought was moving this date out about Plan A to the February 16th date is yes, the numbers look terrible right now, but we knew that. You know, it's after the holidays, everybody's been out and about, they've been doing the things that they want to do, need to do, the things they haven't got to do for a long time and things have taken place. But, our schools have been closed. So, you know, we know that we are not the resource, we're not the problem, it's not worth, people are getting exposed at. But, we've got to make some decisions. You know, we were hoping that by that time, that February 16th date, that the vaccinations would not only be here but a good majority would have had the opportunity to receive that vaccination. So, I'm going to, one more time, we've got to make some decisions because as I've said, as tonight, January the 19th, we start Plan B and that's with every level, starting two days a week in person and remaining in remote learning for three days a week. That will go to February the 16th. I heard some of you say that maybe we might have to have another meeting to look at the numbers. We're hoping that as we move closer to that date, you know, we'll see a trend down in positives and, you know, just the whole situation may look better and of course, as we said, there'll be more vaccinations out there being administered. So, one more time, I'm going to start around, we're going to have to make some decisions tonight, board. And Ms. Adcock, I'll start back again with you.
I just wanted to share that I asked for some data and I actually have been looking at that data. That data was sent out to all of the board members, different data. Some of it was parent data, some of it was teacher data, but I did some percentages on a instructional learning from the parents' point of view and there were five different answers they could have. These percentages to me are very concerning because they're saying that half of the students are not getting any instructional learning in their homes. 42%. Few students are getting instructional learning, it was 27%. Almost all students was 10%, no students was three and most students was 24. So, when you look at 42%, half and then few, you're talking about 69% of our students, the parents feel like they're not getting instructional learning at home with virtual. And I think that's important for us to look at those numbers and understand that we as a school system are required by law to provide an education to these students. And we cannot say with all certainty that our students are learning because we've done no testing. We have no data to back that up. And I just feel like we have to listen to the parents at some point and we have to see their point of view and how these students, what are we going to do? How are they going to make this time up? And I really feel like that we can do this safely. All of us go to the grocery store, we go to Home Depot, we go to Lowe's, we are going out with our families on vacations. I mean, we are doing things ourselves but we are robbing our kids of their education and we really need to think about that before we make remarks or we decide that we want to take, you know, a side on this. Our kids are the reason that we're here. This is a public school system paid for by tax dollars. This school system belongs to the community and we need to step up and we need to do the right thing for our kids.
Ms. Blackwell?
So, there's a couple of things that I wanted to add to that, just awesome by stating that I completely agree with what Ms. Adcock just said. So, I definitely think that saying that we are not considering the safety of kids and teachers is just a complete misrepresentation of what we're doing here. It's been very much shown that the numbers are being spread in the community. It is all community spread. We have not been in school over the last month or so and people are still doing and getting out into the community and increasing these numbers. You know, is it possible, and this may sound crazy, but is it possible that once these kids get back in school, that these numbers might actually go down? Because they are going to be in a place that we know that they are safe. We have certain cleaning procedures, we have, you know, we've got a teacher that is there to keep an eye on them. We don't know what they're doing during the day when they are not with us in the schools. They go to the YMCA, they go to the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, these numbers are still increasing but it's not from being in school. So, is it possible that maybe once they're in a controlled environment, which is where they should be, learning and getting the education that we are supposed to be providing them, that these numbers may actually see a decrease in the community? The other thing that I wanted to say was that, you know, the community does bear some responsibility to this. And I told, you know, Ms. Sandage, I said, you took the words right out of my mouth. Here we are telling everyone that we should not have these children in school and they should be virtual, but yet I see all of these people out at Walmart and Home Depot and Lowe's and going on vacation and they have no problem doing that but yet they are stripping my child from his right to a good, solid education. And that's where the problem lies because our job as a school board is to first and foremost make sure that we are providing a quality education for these children. Everyone can maintain the safety, wear the mask. Like I said, and I've said it multiple times, I work in healthcare, I come in contact with people who have COVID on a regular basis. I have yet thankfully to contract it but it's because I maintain distancing. I wear PPE, I wear goggles, I wear a mask. Teachers are more than welcome to wear whatever makes them feel the most comfortable, whether it be a face shield, whether it be a biohazard suit. They sell them on Amazon, trust me, I've looked them up. It's an option out there if that's what makes you feel more safe. But, at this point, we need to start getting these children back in school because they are paying the ultimate price for the community spread that is going on that we have shown is not being spread in school.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, from my perspective, on the state level, you still have the top doctor in the state that says schools can stay open, hasn't said where schools should close. I'm comfortable with the health screenings that we're giving our students and staff before they come to work, the PPE that we have, the social distancing that we're maintaining in all our classrooms and everyone wearing the mask. To me, what else can, what more can you do to help with safety? Here we have 68% of our parents on this survey want their kids in either B or C. And I was a little bit surprised but our elementary school students, our teachers, 43% of those teachers that answered the survey would like to go back to B or C. That's higher than the average of the school system overall, but I thought that was interesting. But, lastly, I think we've asked the task force to give us some metrics to come up with some issues and concerns and recommendations. I'd like to see those before we make a decision.
So, with that being said, just to clarify, now, we really will not get anything from that task force until about, until February's meeting.
Well, if we don't do anything, we're going to go to B on the 19th and I'm supportive of that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Are you just talking about the decision after February the 16th?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, just clarification. And before I move to Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Farr, we have Emily Wagner with us tonight, also our teacher liaison who would like to make a couple of comments. Ms. Wagner, are you with us?
Yes, I am. All right, good evening to our board members and to our community of live listeners. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank our district leaders and committee members, the community task force, board members, and each individual who have carefully reflected and considered the information presented at last week's board meeting and have been proactive in seeking solutions to the complex problems our community is facing. Concerns on all sides have been presented and I know our board members and district leaders have listened and are working collaboratively to address them. Tonight, our Board of Education may be forced to make another undoubtedly difficult decision that will impact the lives of thousands of people. Some people will agree with the decision that is made tonight while others will disagree. How we feel about this decision is going to be shaped around our own experiences, preferences, and perspectives. However, what we all can agree on is that we love the children in our community and we want what's best for them. While we as individuals cannot control how or when schools open, what we can control and what remains true is how our response to the board's decision aligns to our CCS vision statement that applies to all stakeholders. If you are unfamiliar with the mission statement, it reads as follows. Inspiring minds, engaging hearts, and shaping futures. Although many things have changed for our community over the past 10 months, teaching and learning in Cabarrus County has never stopped. The school building has been closed but schools have not been closed. Our vision has been our guiding principles in every classroom and every school for every student. Teachers and parents alike have worked together to inspire our students when distant learning has felt hard and they have believed in our students and told them that they can do it because they have and will continue to do so. What we say to our students about what they can or cannot do is important, they are listening. Students have inspired us with their resiliency and bravery to show up every day. Across the county, hearts have been engaged as classroom communities have been formed and a safe space has been made for every student in the classroom or on Microsoft Teams. Now more than ever, engagement between school staff and families has been a priority. Finally, futures have continued to be shaped. I know mine has. While COVID-19 will end, our children will continue to grow and change until one day they will be the leaders in our community. I believe our children are better equipped to build a greater future for themselves because of the challenges that they face. However, they are watching and listening to us. It is our job as a community to teach them that we believe that they can and will shape the future in a better place no matter the plan that is selected tonight. Regardless of the plan, CCS students, teachers, and family vision, our vision will remain the same. Do not allow misperceptions or comments on social media to distract you from supporting our most valuable assets, our schools and our teachers. It is never too late to make a change and do the right thing for our children and it starts with one. It begins with our words and how we frame the narrative of our schools. I hope that you will join me in watching our words and supporting our students. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner, and I would also like to reiterate that we have been, we have handled this very professionally and that is our job. This is a very highly charged and emotional decision that affects many. This is a very highly charged and emotional decision that affects many on both sides. And I appreciate all of you maintaining a very professional attitude towards this. We've definitely got to make a decision if the board chooses to. If not, at this point in time, effective January the nineteenth, they will move into Plan B.
I have not had.
I know you have not. I'm getting ready to come to you. So give me just a minute. But I actually was going to ask Mr. Fur, since he did not get a second chance. So I'll let him, and then you can finish. How about that? Mr. Fur?
No, I'm a man of few words tonight, but it's hard not to agree with what Ms. Adcock and Ms. Blackwell and Rob has mentioned earlier. I think we've got to go back to the nineteenth and B, but I'm not naive enough to know that we're going to have to take a hard look before February the sixteenth. But right now, I'm in accordance with the rest of them.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, before you start your comments, I would like to say I've heard each of you say that, so maybe we need to entertain another meeting at some point in time, a little earlier than our February work session, maybe somewhere in the middle, or I'll let you just...
When's our retreat?
January the twenty-third. Okay. So Ms. Carpenter, you're next.
Okay. Well, what I'm going to say is I still think we should follow our recommendations of our superintendent. I think that we need to follow his recommendations and the recommendations of our Health Alliance. I think we're jumping the gun, especially with where we're sitting right now in our county. I think that we should wait, especially since our teachers have not been vaccinated yet. We know that they're next in line for the vaccination. We're close on that. And I think the teachers, especially when you look at what we're seeing right now, when you see sixty, at least sixty-three percent saying, and you all got the same emails that I got showing how afraid they are or uncomfortable they are, when you get sixty-three percent say they would rather stay in C. And it is because of where they are right now. And we know that the vaccination is really close, and you may have a lot of them that would be getting the vaccination, hopefully, within the next two to three weeks. I think that I would feel a lot more comfortable than they would if they have that, at least one vaccination, you know, get at least one vaccination. And I would like to put a motion on the table that, and y'all can vote it down, but at least I've got it on the table, that we take the consideration of our superintendent and with numbers being the way they are, that we put a stay in C for at least two weeks to two and a half weeks and then go to B. We can still take it a step at a time, and that way, that gives a couple of weeks for the teachers and staff to get vaccinations. And we're taking a gradual step at a time instead of just jumping into it. So that, I'm putting that motion on the table for, say, three weeks to stay, to continue in C, then go to B.
So your start date for Plan to stay in C would start on Jan., or just keep us in there for three more weeks? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, for three weeks. And that gives time for testing, for the teachers to get some shots, and then for our numbers to go down and for us to reassess at that time and then to go to B instead of just automatically jumping into B. I'm taking the recommendation from our superintendent and from the Health Alliance.
So I'm hearing you say that we would remain in C, so let's just say through the end of January. Is that, would that be correct?
Yeah, the end of January.
Okay.
And that gives, give us a chance for our numbers to go down and for us to reassess at that time.
Okay. So a couple of asks before we go for a second. You've asked, and it just came to me, that the Kannapla City Board of Education has agreed to continue their Plan C until February the fifteenth. Union County today started Plan A. Charlotte Mecklenburg will start Plan B as we were doing, starting next week. But that's just a couple of those that I've had that you were asking about. So there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Carpenter that states that we remain in Plan C through the end of January. Do I hear a second? Hearing none. That motion fails for a lack of a second. Is there another motion on the floor that anyone feels comfortable putting something else out there for consideration?
I mean, is it, is it possible to make a motion that we have an emergency meeting?
We don't need an emergency meeting. We could do a special call meeting.
A special call meeting in order to assess these numbers and then hopefully get something solidified for parents within a reasonable amount of time to figure out what we're going to do on the sixteenth?
So what is your timeframe for that special call meeting? And Mr. Walter has made reference to having a discussion at our January the twenty-third retreat, which we actually could have a discussion at that.
That's perfect. I mean, I think that we've already got that meeting in place. I think that if that's something that we are able to discuss and be able to do that, I'm totally fine with that. I just want to make sure that we give parents enough time to also prepare, and of course, teachers as well and children. You know, a lot of these things have kind of been falling, and I know the plan has been to try to do this and give them as much notice as possible in moving to Plan A if we are going to do that, K through five. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we have, have a plan to keep rolling forward with that.
Okay. So just let me make sure I understand where you're coming from. We would still move into Plan B, January the nineteenth. We would not make any changes to that. We would add a discussion item to our retreat for an update of information. We actually will have another Monday meeting with the Health Alliance that Dr. Lauder and I are on that will get another update if the numbers are still, you know, where they are or if they're coming down at all, you know, just whatever that status is going to look like. So I would, if you would like to put that into a motion, that we will do a reassessment at our retreat on the twenty-third at that time. And at that point in time, and maybe Mr. Schultz would like to make a comment, we should have some information, just a basic from the facilitators back from the task force with some proposed recommendations or, you know, some metrics and, you know, maybe that'll give us a little bit more information. But what I really need right now is a motion to add a discussion item to our retreat agenda for an update and any type of change that would take place in our planned status.
So, and I saw Mr. Schultz nodding, yes, that we will have some updated numbers. So I will put that motion out on the table that we amend the agenda for the retreat on January the twenty-third to include discussion on our COVID numbers.
Okay.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Blackwell, second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Ms. Carpenter? I'm not hearing you one way or the other.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's a unanimous vote. That's great. That's a good compromise. Okay, very good. So that motion passes unanimously. So Dr. Lauder, if you'll just make sure that we get that added to our retreat agenda for discussion and updates, that will be great.
I have a question.
I'm sorry? Ms. Sandage?
So just so folks are clear that are listening, on January nineteenth, we will go back into B. What about those kids who are on C before January nineteenth that want to go into B come January nineteenth?
Dr. Lauder?
Yeah, right now, what we discuss is the same group of students that was, that were coming in for B would be, would be doing that also. So our self-contained students and the groups that were coming in before in preschool would be coming four days a week under B. So that would be, same groups that were coming before four days a week would continue four days a week.
Is that clear to all?
No, because if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, parents who chose to be in C for that timeframe could change to B come January nineteenth. So that was my understanding as a parent. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, if they were in any of those categories, so if they were choosing to be C and they were a self-contained student, if they choose to, would they be able to come now? Yes, but the same groups are allowed to come.
Is that clear? I know that you're a parent for that.
I'll ask later. I'm confused.
Okay, okay.
I would also like to add something. I got an email from Dr. Hill that the information I shared was from May and June of 2020, and they don't have any updated information on that chart and information that I shared. So I just want to make sure that...
And just for the viewing audience, can you describe what that was?
Well, it was what I said about parent instructional times when I gave the percentages. That was data that was from May and June of 2020. She just wanted me to make sure that I clarified that.
And I think what, what happened is we always do parent data at the end of the school year. And so last year obviously ended very strangely and unique. So the data that was, that was cited earlier is from the end of last school year. We will have another survey at the end of this school year to be able to compare it to. But I think what's important is what has changed since the end of last year. So remember, we went into remote in March. And so some of the things that have changed, for example, you know, social, emotional learning was not a focus. It is a district focus. We were doing essentially all asynchronous learning, meaning we weren't doing face-to-face instruction this year. Pretty much, as we said, we kind of challenged our people to make sure and they've been doing face-to-face instruction pretty much every day except for Friday. There weren't grades first last year as we finished up. Now grades are a reflection of mastery standards. We use standard-based grading, ten-point grading scale. Attendance was encouraged and tracked. Now it's required and recorded. Pretty much, students worked in isolation during that time. Now they work in collaboration, project work, again, do that on video. Testing was waived at the end of last year. There's no indication that state testing is going to be waived for this year. Devices provided only to students who requested one. Now we make sure that all students K-12 have one. People were using different learning management systems, basically the platforms that people learn on. Now we have district-wide Canvas. And there really wasn't a plan for remote learning that we were, you know, we had to require a remote learning plan. So I would just say that, no, it was certainly not ideal last year, and it's not ideal now. But again, our teachers and all our employees up that game. Doesn't mean that everyone is happy now, but certainly is a different set of expectations that our faculty has kind of risen to. So I think that was what was important is to say, that's the last piece of data that we've gotten. That was in a setting that's really not reflective of the setting now.
And I would just like to say, there was a couple pieces of information that came out of that call this morning, that the long-term facility numbers looked much better. That had actually went, that started at like eighty-three, down to forty-four, almost down to like twenty. And that there was a couple of other indicators that, you know, at some point in time, with the vaccination being out there and that taking place, hopefully a little sooner if we can move through that as we get closer to the February sixteenth. I think people were concerned that we were trying to get people from C to A and really quickly, and the dates were being skewed. So I think that was a little bit of a fear factor there. But for right now, the takeaway tonight is all level of students, K-5, middle school and high school, will go into Plan B starting effective January the nineteenth, and the board will do a reassessment on January the twenty-third, and we will see what things look like then. Is that good for everyone?
I think, just to clarify, I think what Ms. Sandage's question was, so the commitment forms go out to students that are in C, and they will open those up again tomorrow. So people who were choosing all remote learning will be able to opt into that to be able to start second semester, meaning the nineteenth in B, which I think, if that makes sense. So it's already out there, but yes, now we're starting a second semester. So if they were in remote learning for the last six months, three months, they can choose to go to B, and those will go out tomorrow again.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because are we not doing sports right now, like basketball?
Yep.
And some of, and so you were talking about the children and not being in school, so they couldn't be spreading things. So they are out there. They could be spreading things because haven't we had numerous teams being quarantined and everything? So those children are out there, and they are spreading things. Is that not correct?
They're getting it from other places.
Huh?
They're getting it from, they're getting it from other places.
Well, how many teams have we had quarantined?
Dr. Lauder, I'm going to let you speak to that. I know you've done a good job answering those emails.
Yeah, I'm curious, because the parents have been there at the sporting events, plus they've been, how many times, how many teams have we had quarantined?
I think now we have five. I think there may have been a total of seven. I don't know that right off the top of my head. I'll have to check and make sure. But numerous volleyball teams, numerous basketball teams, and I think we currently have five teams that are quarantined now. But I will say to Mr. Fur's point, what that is, is a student, you know, brings that to the practice, for example, and the whole team there has to quarantine because of their close contact. So I don't think, Ms. Carpenter, that they're spreading it at basketball practice. We don't really have any cases of that. We have a positive case where a student's gotten in the community, and then because they're in close contact with the entire basketball team, then the basketball team has to quarantine. Is pretty much how those scenarios have been going.
But, I mean, but the children are out, though. They're not, even though they're not in school, they're, they're there.
Yes.
Right? They're in the school building, so they are there. So they have been out, correct? They're, they're in the building, and the parents have been in the building, correct?
Well, right now, as you know, I think we've kind of sent out, the High School Athletic Association sets the guidelines. They are the guiding body for, for high school athletics in North Carolina. So we, like, like every district that I'm aware of, to be quite honest, I don't, I don't know of any that aren't, they follow the guidance of the High School Athletic Association. So when the High School Athletic Association, like right now, is saying that we can play basketball, but all students will have to wear a mask while they play basketball, that's a new thing that they decided in the last month or so. So those groups, again, when the High School Athletic Association is permitting it, we, like every district that I'm aware of, is doing the same thing. They have permitted it. We are only letting home parents come into any of those games. So you're talking about meeting the governor's order of less than twenty-five people that are there, obviously in a, in a large high school gymnasium. So again, that's what most of the districts around us are following that policy, and we will continue unless, you know, the board thinks something different to follow the guidance of the High School Athletic Association. So it is not that there is massive spread among sports at schools. There's, that's not what the case is. But what it does mean is these sports, like basketball is obviously the best example, where students are just, to guard somebody to play basketball, they're within close contact. So as soon as somebody has a positive that they got in the community and show up at a basketball practice, then it may quarantine the whole team and the coach. And that's, that's what we've certainly done numerous times over the past few weeks.
Well, I just, no, I've seen, we've gotten reports of the quarantines. That's why I was, but I knew that we've been seeing that, and that's, that was my question because I'd seen that newsletter, so I was thinking, well, there's been games, and then we've gotten the emails of parents asking, well, if we can do sports, why can't we do this, or why can't we do that? So that was my question. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And with that, I will ask for a motion for the meeting to be adjourned.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. May I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, we will say good night to our viewing audience. Thank you for joining us this evening. These meetings are also on our website. You can pull them up through YouTube and watch them as well, and we look forward to seeing you at our February work session. Thank you and good night.
Good night.